Okay, we are on item number 20, Administration of COVID-19 Update. And before we get Chuck Henry up here, Chuck, it's going to be probably a five, six-hour grilling today, so just get ready, buddy, all right? Good, thumbs up, he's always ready. I'm going to take one of the very few, very limited prerogatives I have as chair, to just read something into the record. I will tell you that we were, my wife and I were numbers 57,600 and something, and we went Friday afternoon for our first shot. Nobody jumped the line, no one up here jumped the line. And it was absolutely, we went to Sarasota Square Mall. It was stunningly, absolutely seamless. We were in line, by the time we entered the building to have the needle put in our arm, it was 10 minutes. We sat for 15 minutes, and it was just a wonderful experience. Everyone there, our employees, Department of Health employees, the citizens, everyone with pleasant, smiling faces. So, on behalf of the commission, I do want to read this into the record, because we've got an awful lot of people working on this. The work being done for providing vaccines at Sarasota Square Mall shows the incredible collaboration of the State Department of Health and the county. It is a partnership with teams from multiple county departments, Department of Health, and volunteers. It takes approximately 50 staff at the site, with 30% of them being volunteers, to run the site on any given day. Many, if not almost all, many of those volunteers are retired or active doctors and nurses who are coming together as a community to help with this. The team running at capacity can vaccinate 2,000 citizens per day, and they are working potentially to expand the operation to double that. Supporting that operation includes teams from emergency management, communications, general services, and staff from multiple departments, including public works and libraries. Communications has teams working at a level beyond many local governments by working social media and responding directly to citizens to help them. The teams working the phone lines for 861 VAXS have answered over 116,000 calls since the registration system opened. There is a registration desk at the mall to help citizens if they're having any issues that is made up of employees from multiple county departments. Our general services team, working with the EOC, has helped provide all of the support equipment for the site and works to maintain the system in the spaces being used by our teams. It is amazing how quickly the system works and how fast, how fast you move into the site and receive your vaccine. You can be in and out within 30 minutes or less, depending on how many people are moving through the lines. Our registration system continues to work well as we have reached over 82,000 registrations now. That's the number we're at to date, and the team from the EOC and EIT continue to work tirelessly to process appointments each day. Many have been working seven days a week since the beginning of the registration system, system went live. It is truly a team working in collaboration to make all this happen, and on behalf of the county commission, we want to thank all those involved. Now, Mr. Henry, you're going to give us an update, and then five hours of questions, and then you can, you can leave. Was all that accurate, Chuck? Now's your time to correct me publicly. Was that all that accurate?
Absolutely.
Thank you, buddy.
and Human Services, and Administrator for the Florida Department of Health in Sarasota. And yes, I'm a health guy, not a technical guy, but I try. So, real quick through the numbers, covering the things we usually cover. I appreciate all those comments, and I can't stress enough how much the volunteers mean to us. Thank you for mentioning them, not only at our site, but many of our pop-ups, as we saw with the City of Sarasota, and we ran a pop-up with them, and probably 90% volunteers on a weekend drive-through. We've partnered with the City of Venice, the City of Northport, and we continue to do partnerships wherever we can, both with volunteers and city, county, and municipal employees, and it really helps us get this vaccine out quickly to the community. Looking at our cumulative case numbers for Sarasota County, this is as of yesterday, we stand at 27,572, 1,259 hospitalizations, 750 deaths, 385 of those are linked to long-term care facilities. We have seen a dramatic decrease in, in those cases, as vaccines have been distributed to the majority of those facilities now. Our 14-day positivity rate is down at 3.6, which is, which is good, but we'd like to see it continue lower. It seems to be just hovering right there for the time being. Our case rate per 100,000 stands at 212 over a 14-day period, and again, we like to use those 14-day averages because it evens out the testing reporting that varies day-to-day. Currently, or as of yesterday, we had 69 COVID-positive individuals in our area hospitals, 14 of those in the ICU, and those numbers have remained fairly steady for the last couple of weeks, and we'd like to see them continue downward, but that's where we're at for right now. On the vaccine side, we're now up to 107,518 individuals receiving at least one dose of the vaccine, and you can see by the numbers on the slide, almost 60,000 first dose only, and 47,000 that have received both doses. So, that's looking really good. 23%, just over 23% of our total population in Sarasota County has now been vaccinated. 84% of the vaccines we've distributed have gone to those over the age of 65, and our percent of, of those over 65 that have been vaccinated now is 55% and continuing to climb. Our registry, as you already noted, 150,638 as of this morning. That number's always moving and changing, and we're up to registration in terms of where we're at and, and who we're serving, accounts 82,904. And, and as I say every time, each account can have two registrations in it, so it's actually a lot more people than the 82,000 that it indicates have been served. Just an update on variants, since I brought that up last time I was here, we're now up to 648 cases across Florida, and Florida continues to lead the nation with the largest number of variants reported. Those have resulted in 20 hospitalizations and two deaths. The majority of those, 642 of those cases, have been the UK variant, and that's also the variant that's responsible for both of the deaths in the state of Florida. There's been five of the Brazilian variant and just one of the South African variant identified. Again, we continue to watch that. It's an important component of our battle against COVID, because while we expect viruses to mutate, the question of what that means, the so-what question that I talked about last time, you know, does, does, as the variant develops, is it more resistant to treatment maladies? Is it harder to identify through our testing processes? Does it cause more rapid infection or slower infection? Does it result in more hospitalization or not? Those are all things that scientists continue to study, and as more information comes out, certainly I'll be sharing that. But the importance of that in terms of, as we vaccinate our community and ensuring that we can continue a downward trend, can't be stressed enough, and really, that's why the recommendations you see from CDC continue to say we should try to avoid traveling, we should continue to social distance when we're out in the public in big groups, and mask up when we can't. They did release some new guidance yesterday from CDC that says if, if you're in a group setting and everybody's been vaccinated, that it's now safe to have that contact without masks, which is a change, but they recommend and they're cautious to say, if you're in groups of multiple families getting together with unvaccinated people, you should still be masked and be cautious so that we can protect the vulnerable. The last slide I had today really is just to talk about the new changes to the vaccine administration process in Florida. As most people are aware, because we're getting tons of questions already, the Governor's Executive Order 2162 was released yesterday, late yesterday afternoon, and what it does is essentially adds persons 60 years of age and older to the list of those eligible for vaccines, and this goes into effect on Monday, March 15th. So, those will be the changes. We're getting lots of questions, and what we posted to the webpage last night is that we're evaluating the executive order. We're looking at how we can best implement that for our citizens so that it best serves them, and we'll be making some announcements probably within the next few days, but certainly before the end of the week, providing instructions to everyone that's in that 60 to 65 age group on, on how they get into the system to be eligible for vaccines. So, that's my short report for today. I'm happy to answer questions.
Sure, we're going to start with Commissioner Seigler.
Yeah, Chuck, real quick, the medical, people that have like a pre-existing condition that are now eligible for the vaccine if their doctor gives them, I guess, signs off on it, can you describe that? Because I think there's a little bit of confusion. How do they take advantage of that? And then how do they, basically, how do they sign up? And where do they go?
So, there's two components to that, and I'm glad you asked that, because that's something we're actively working on and trying to answer questions about. One component is eligibility, and it's very clear, it's been clear from the beginning that they were eligible but being directed towards hospitals, but it became clear that hospitals didn't have the capacity to cover all of that, and there wasn't a standardized tool to determine who's eligible and who's not. So, with the changes about a week ago, now there is a form that DOH created. It's an assertion from their provider, they need to see their physician, whom they have a relationship with, who signs that, that they do meet the requirement to be vaccinated. So, that's one piece, is to get that piece of paper.
So, go to your physician.
Vaccinated. Go to your physician and obtain that. Then the next piece that's a little more challenging is where do you find the vaccine? So, in our mass vaccine setup at Sarasota Square Mall, we're not set up to provide those types of vaccines. The executive order that authorizes that requires the person given the vaccine to be a pharmacist, a physician, or an advanced nurse practitioner. And while I do have some of those volunteering, I, I don't have them there every day, and I can't guarantee citizens that, and we're pulling names by appointment only for that mass site from our countywide registry that's been focused on those over 65 and healthcare workers. So, so that's not the right place. What happened with the executive order is it opened it up so they can now make appointments at any of the pharmacy programs, so the Publix, the CVS, the Wal-Mart, the Sam's, has those come online. Again, that's not the simplest process. There's a lot of other people now eligible competing for those same slots. So, we're currently in the process of working with our medical society, and our Sarasota Medical Society has been a tremendous partner for us. We're looking for solutions to get more vaccine out to practitioners in our community so that we have a place to send these individuals that's a little simpler than the current path. I do want to say the hospitals are beginning to receive vaccine for that purpose, but most of them have a huge backlog of their own clients between their hospital and the practices affiliated with the hospital that they're trying to work through as well. So, there is, right now, a shortage of access to vaccines for that group, but we're working on a separate process for them to access it and hope to be able to announce that.
Access that through the state, state?
Through, through multiple sites around the, so we're trying to increase the number of outlets available to them. Right now, they, they can go to hospitals, but we know that's a challenge if, if you're not in one of the hospital-affiliated practices. They can go to drugstores, CVS, you know, Publix, et cetera, but we know that's a challenge to get appointments, and it'll become more challenging after Monday with the 60 and above being eligible.
So, as of right now, the message for someone that has a pre-existing condition or that's eligible, per the Governor's order, because I have had a bunch of people ask me about this, the message to them is go see your physician, get that form signed, and then don't come to the state site at, at the mall or wherever else these pop-ups are, but actually go to like a CVS or a Publix and try to register with them and get in with them.
And monitor Sarasota County's webpage, because as we get new outlets online, that's where we'll put the information, and we hope to have those online soon to.
Okay.
Provide them more access.
All right, great.
It is important to note that, you know, some, sometimes the perception is when the governor adds someone to the eligibility that, that they somehow move to the front of the line, and that's, that's not accurate. It certainly allows them to legally now go get a vaccine, and we work hard to provide more outlets, but it doesn't give them front-of-the-line.
Yeah, and that's especially a little bit more difficult in a county like Sarasota, where we do have so many people 65 and up that have already registered, that are in line, that we need to take care of, that we haven't gotten through that list yet, and it'll take us some time. So, if you're like me and you're in your mid-30s, you don't have a pre-existing condition or you're eligible, then it's going to be a little bit till we get through our 65 and up first.
But again, we, I think the quickest path forward for those with medical necessity, verified by their physicians, is, is to use the existing system and then watch as we bring more outlets online, because we do understand the need to vaccinate that group and protect them. So, we are working very hard to create more opportunity for vaccine.
Okay, great. So, just check our website for that. What are we doing about teachers? I know 50 and up are eligible, but as that opens up, I know other counties kind of specifically have programs or they're looking at separating educators and doing like specific events just for them, maybe in the schools or with the school district partnering with them. What's the status in Sarasota County with teachers?
So, we're partnering with the school district and in discussion with the school district and the state. As you're aware, we already had a closed pod for those teachers 65 and above. The state is putting together teams to come into counties if they're invited, and we certainly would invite them, because it brings additional vaccine in to run pods in partnership with the school. That could happen as early as next weekend, but it depends on the logistics. It may take two weeks, but we expect vaccine to come in and that we put a system together to do that for the approximately, just under 3,000 teachers that we have, that we know of in the public school system, but it would also include our private K through 12 as well.
Private, and what about daycare?
Uh.
Do we know? You can get back to me on that.
It includes kindergarten under the state rule, and so this, it gets a little bit fuzzy, and so I just had to refer to my notes here.
So, in some of these private facilities, how would they, because I have had people in private facilities that run private facilities, ask me, who would they contact to be part of that discussion or effort?
So, they certainly can contact me at the Health Department to.
Okay.
Make sure that we're aware of them, and, and we're acutely aware that we need to include when these pods come together, not only our public school and charter schools and their affiliated, but also the private schools, K through 12, which would include kindergarten.
Okay, great.
Now, under the federal rule, at federally-supported sites, and there's one site in Tampa at the Greyhound Track that's directly supported by the federal government, and many of our drugstore pharmacy programs are direct national support, the federal government has required that they follow the federal guidelines, which does include preschool, you know, through K-12. And, you know, there's, you know, on Friday, when that information first became public, there were some indications it would include our post-secondary schools, college professors. Now, it looks like over the last few days, on the federal side, they've narrowed that scope and clearly defined they, they intend to do K through 12, including preschool.
Great, two more. What about the, the faith effort in the Newtown community? What's an update on that? Where are we at with that? I know there was a plan for kind of a long, longer-term effort there to basically get vaccine in the minority community, because it hasn't been adopted as much, but where are we at in Sarasota County?
So, we continue to work with a number of community partners in North Sarasota. There's been two closed pod events so far, and there's another one planned coming up either this weekend or next weekend, and that's a state-sponsored one that will come in and bring additional vaccine into the community above our, our county allotment. And so, we continue to look for opportunities to provide vaccine to that community, not just in North Sarasota, but we're getting to look at other areas where, where we know there's a need, and so we'll continue that work to try to ensure that they have access to the vaccine and keep the percentages vaccinated close to what we have for our overall population.
Now, I know, we're still getting through our list. I mean, this is a big effort, and we still have a long way to go.
I estimate about 70,000 remaining, 65 and above on our list. I can't tell you how many of those will actually take the vaccine, or how, maybe some have already gotten it, but.
But now we're start, we're going to start filling that up more with more people that are eligible. So, you know, we're looking right now, but are, is there a discussion? I know this is looking way in advance, but is there a discussion about next year? Do we know if you need to take this vaccine again? You know, 12 months, like the flu every year? And if so, are we already planning or having those discussions?
So, certainly CDC is having those discussions and looking at the data. I don't know that we have enough experience with these new vaccines to really know. I think they'll be looking at the, the pilot groups that initially worked with the drug companies to, to pilot the vaccine. They're the ones that have been vaccinated the longest, so they'll continue to, to study those groups and look at what the immune response is over time, but I think it's going to be probably the end of the year before they'll be able to really determine, is there, is there still good immunity from the initial vaccine, or do we need to talk about a booster or another shot?
Okay, and then lastly, the COVID numbers, Sarasota County compared to other counties, what is your take? I mean, we don't specifically have that information comparing to other counties with us today, I don't think, but just reviewing that and your expertise and where you sit, you know, how do you feel about Sarasota versus the other 66 counties in Florida in terms of positivity?
So, our positivity rates in Sarasota are trending slightly lower than the majority of the state. There certainly are some counties out there lower than us, but many counties a little bit higher. Most of the state statewide is running between 5 and 6% on positivity, and we're at 3.6 right now. So, I think we're doing really well, and that's a tribute to our citizens who continue to do the right things and follow guidance. As I said earlier, the big concern for me is what happens as we move forward. People are anxious, I understand that, to get rid of the mask, to get back to normal. I think we just need to be patient a little longer. Only 23% of our total population's been vaccinated, and so while, while we're moving forward quickly to protect the most vulnerable, you know, the most transmission occurs in that 18 to 40-year-old group, even though they don't have the, the largest health outcomes. So, making sure that everyone understands how to protect themselves and their families, and continues to do the right things, you know, until we can reach that level of herd immunity, which, in a combination of vaccines and, and natural immunity from prior disease, needs to reach in that 70 to 80% range, and we see percent positivity probably going sub 2% before we could, before I'd be comfortable saying, I think things are good.
Okay, and I appreciate your efforts. Thanks for answering all these questions, Chuck. I will tell you that there's kind of two components here, is you have the supply and you have the distribution. The supply we can't control, we're waiting for, we're just always waiting, but once that supply occurs, I want to commend you and your team and everyone else that's involved with this effort, because it's a massive effort. I mean, it's seven days a week, it's non-stop. Every time I call you, you answer. I mean, I think I called you last on a Friday night, like at 8:00 at night, and you're answering. And so, all, and Commissioner Mayo mentioned it and read an email, but all the feedback I have gotten, all to a T, has been positive, a great experience, once they go in to get the vaccine, and that's due to your staff and your operation and your planning, and also the customer service going there. So, you know, while it, citizens are frustrated with the supply, and I get that, I think the execution and the distribution has been A++ and you have made our job a lot easier because of that, so I just want to thank you for that.
Okay, great questions, and that was a great comment also, Commissioner. Commissioner Moran.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Chuck. As always, just appreciate what you do. Take a minute with me on, so, let's just round numbers here for a few minutes. Is it 150,000 in Sarasota County over 65?
It's 160,800 and something, according to the state census.
Got it. And, and by your estimate, 70,000 are still remaining?
That, that would be my, my big guess.
Okay. Well, that's where I'm going with this. It's, I'm trying to work the numbers on this. Without a state one enrollment system, I'm curious of your thought process, how this is going to be happening towards the end. For example, hang with me here for a minute, just to keep the numbers rounded, 150,000, so we're not doing algebra here today, is if, if there's a certain percentage of the over 65 population that is just going to refuse to take the vaccine, are you guys backing that number out as, as the goal to ring the bell of when you've vaccinated the over 65 folks that are eligible and willing to take it? Have you baked a number into a certain percentage of folks just aren't going to do it?
So, I, I think there will be a percentage. It's a lower number with the older group, because they are in the higher risk, but, you know, for me, the ring the bell is when, when our 65 and above registry has worked its way through all of the eligible residents, then, then I think it's time to move on. Does that mean 100% have been covered? Probably not.
Got it. Could, could you take a minute and go back to your first slide with your numbers that you usually show us every meeting? Because this is where the data's going to get to be important, if you just.
The vaccine slide?
The very first slide you had. Because here's, here's where it gets.
This is it.
I'm sorry. Here's where it gets confusing for me. It was the one that showed, I believe, 100 and, or, yeah, okay. So, when you're chasing this, trying to get those 160,000-plus people, is that at what point are you going to go to the state, well, you being a state employee, go to the state and say, listen, I'm coming to the end of my 100, over 65-year-old folks that are willing and able to take it, you need to lower the threshold to 60, bring in other classes that Commissioner Ziegler mentioned. What is going to be your indication that you're, you're getting towards the end of people that are willing and eligible?
So, for, for me in Sarasota County, because we have a population that's skewed to the older side, that's not a role I've needed to play. And, you know, statewide, you know, we have 67 counties, and there's some counties that may only have 13% of their population over the age of 65, and they're done. They're ready to move on. And so, you know, the, the governor's trying to make decisions for the whole state, and then there's areas that are ready to move on two weeks ago, and there's areas like Sarasota that still have, I think, about 70,000 to go. I, I think we're going to be behind that curve to answer your question, so.
Understood, but what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is that's a perfect example. There's a community out there that they've already vaccinated, they're 6, over 65, that were willing and eligible to take it, and they're like, hey, I need more. Without the state enrollment registration system, I think it's imperative that these 67 communities are communicating back to the state, because they don't have the state enrollment system to actually make those solid determinations of when people are ready for their next phase. Because what's troubling to me is what adds to this is if you just do raw math in this, if you have, let's say, again, keep the numbers round, you have 150,000 people that are over 65, and you've technically vaccinated 135,000 people, you'd make the argument, well, I'm done. The problem is, though, some of those people didn't live in our community, they physically came here to get the shot, just like some of our residents went to other communities to get a shot. How were you guys internally communicating with the state and all the counties to make sure people are getting the appropriate allocation? Again, I get it, there's lots of debate there. Are you guys communicating together on who's supposed to be getting what?
Yes. So, in Florida, we have the, the Florida Shots, which is a vaccination registry. We've used it for years and years, primarily for childhood vaccines. It gives us the ability in the state of Florida, if, if your child is vaccinated in Sarasota and you move to Jacksonville and you lose your shot records, you can go to the Health Department and they can pull it up and tell you all the vaccines that have been given to your child. We're using that same system for our COVID-19 vaccines, and to the extent possible, we make every effort to enter the vaccines into that system within 24 hours of administering the vaccine. That's, that's our goal every day, which sometimes gets challenging when you're doing 2,000 a day, but once they're in that system, it takes 24 to 40 hour, 40, 48 hours max for it to work its way through the system and show up in these vaccine numbers that the state puts out. So, the state is tracking that very closely and, and leaning on us to get those, that information into Florida Shots rapidly, so that they can track who's getting vaccinated, what are the age groups of who's getting vaccinated, you know, what, what is the race, what is the ethnicity? So, they're looking at all this data on a daily basis, as are we, to evaluate what's happening in our community in terms of vaccine.
That is incredibly promising. First, I've heard of that. I'm thrilled to hear that, actually. Mr. Chairman, one more quick question on this is, you know, memories get short on this, Chuck. From the first day you stood before us, and nobody even knew what COVID-19 meant, the goal, as I understood it very clearly, was that there was going to be a tremendous percentage of the general population of this country are going to get COVID-19. The scary part is it's everything from literally no symptoms to tragically death, and doing whatever it took to not overwhelm the medical care system is, to this. whatever it took to not overwhelm the medical care system is, to this day, again, keeping this simple, and it's not simple, is keeping this simple, is that are we in a position where we're overwhelmed? And just maybe a historical thing, were we ever overwhelmed? And again, it's a compliment to you and, of course, our medical systems locally, but are we in a position of being overwhelmed as we speak?
So we've been very fortunate in Sarasota. We have not only excellent medical systems and healthcare systems with our hospitals, but, you know, again, our citizens responded in a way they should to do the right things. We've never seen our healthcare system overwhelmed, which was our primary goal to begin with. In July, I think we hit our peak in terms of hospitalizations with about 160 COVID-positive patients in the hospital, and a large percentage of those in the ICU, I want to say 60, 70, which really stresses our hospital system. Understanding we have a lot of beds across the system, but that's because they're needed year-round for everything else, and so when you add COVID on top of that, you can very quickly see a healthcare system get overwhelmed. We have not had the shortage of ventilators. That's not to say that hospitals didn't have a lot of stressful moments, especially in July when we peaked, and we continue to watch it closely because of the variant issue. But I think we're in excellent, excuse me, excellent shape in Sarasota County with our healthcare system. Pardon me. Okay, we'll try. I have a frog today for some reason. So I think our system is in excellent shape, and we'll continue to monitor that closely. We look at those hospital numbers every day and talk about those with our emergency operations Probably the only thing as we move forward that I would have any concern about at all is, thank you, is again, what happens with the variant if we see an upsurge? You know, but along with that, as we've moved through, the goal may have shifted a little bit because we now have really robust treatment processes. We understand more about the disease. We know how to keep more people out of the ICU and maybe even treat them external to the hospital, and all those things have really helped as they've developed along the way. And I think they will continue to develop. The vaccine process, I think, is going to be outstanding. You know, all of the vaccines, without question, all three of them approved so far in the United States unquestionably dramatically reduce death and dramatically reduce hospitalizations and severe outcomes for those that have been vaccinated. So I think we have a really promising future ahead. We just have to stay the course a little bit longer.
Thank you, Chuck. You're just excellent at what you do. Appreciate you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Good questions. Commissioner Dieter and then Commissioner Cutzinger.
Okay. Well, our heart still goes out to those who are suffering with COVID or with the death of a loved one due to COVID, because their pain is never over, but I would agree that we've had a lot of complaints along the way as we worked our way through the process of signing. How do you sign up? I mean, if you hearken back to when all this started, it was pretty up in the air, and we've learned as we've gone. And when we're now to the final step where we're getting the inoculations, I've gotten mine, and I see you served through 59,984, which made me laugh, because I was like, 59,122, I think, was my number. So, but in this final phase, when people are getting inoculated, there's 100% approval. I've not heard one complaint, and a lot of times complaints come from not elderly people who just like to complain, but they're kind of constantly double-checking themselves. Am I in the right place? You know, so they want those questions answered. And the staff at the Sarasota Square Mall where I went for my shot, they were just so helpful. They anticipated every question. Everybody was calm, they waited their turn, they were well-treated, and they get a card confirming the date of their second shot. So that takes away that worry and another phone call, so that was all good. The only thing I see left with any confusion are these pop-ups. You know, the governor comes around and a pop-up in a certain spot, and people think because the pop-up is there in maybe their community that it's serving only those people. We have asked you this before, and is it still true that if you have a pop-up in Venice, it's not really just for people from Venice? We still stick to our list, correct?
That's correct, and that's, as you're aware, has been a question across the state with the pop-ups. And in Sarasota County, we have chosen to try to stick with our registry and ask the state when they're bringing vaccine in, "Please come in, we want the vaccine here."
Right.
Whether it's a, you know, they have a program that visits 55 and above communities to vaccinate. They have programs that come to various communities for different reasons, and we consistently, for these large events, ask them to utilize our registration system because we're trying to work our way through that, and we have a large number of seniors waiting on that registration list, and it seems to be the only fair way to do it. That has caused some issues, you know, that we have great partners in the cities. The cities want to hold, you know, vaccine events in their cities for their residents, you know, but because we're trying to stay true to this registry, 65 and above, and pull them off in the order that they registered, it makes moving it around, we can do that, and we take advantage of opportunities wherever we can to get vaccine out, but we still use a registry for all of the mass events.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Cutzinger?
Chuck, as has been said already, but I would like to take a minute to say it again. Throughout this whole process, I've called you dozens of times, and I can only remember one time when you didn't personally answer the phone, one time, no matter what time of day, night, weekend, whatever. And also, even that one time, it was within a few minutes you called me back. And that's amazing. And so, you know, this board has a high degree of respect and appreciation for what you, your staff, and the volunteers have done, and I hope we've said that enough, we want to make that very clear. Speaking to volunteers, would you just take a minute and talk about who you're looking for as volunteers? Because I had that question. Who can volunteer? There's a criteria involved, and I know volunteers have been a huge part of this. So a great appreciation of volunteers. Speak to that for a minute, if you will.
So any citizen could volunteer, and we have a process we go through to ensure, to get them on a roster so they're part of our system, and there's a little bit of training. You know, our biggest needs are in the vaccinator side, so that's licensed individuals like nurses, advanced practice nurses, physicians, pharmacists. So there's a whole list of who can vaccinate that we have if volunteers want to check with us to see if they qualify. For those professionals, there's a little bit more to volunteering. We have to have their current license number and their information so that we can verify that their license is current, so we can ensure that the people vaccinated are legal to vaccinate, and then we put them on a roster and cover them. Right now, we're doing really well with our volunteer list at Sarasota Square Mall, but as you've heard already today, we're looking to expand either to a larger space or an additional space. It's a good problem to have, and I think, if I think back a month or so ago, I said I was hoping for the day that I've had more vaccine to give than I could get out and needed more staff, and I'm reaching that point very quickly. In fact, this week, we had 13,000 new doses and 7,000 second doses to do. So 20,000 exceeds my 2,000 a day for 14 days at the mall. So we're actively looking as more and more vaccine comes in, and, you know, because of all of you that have pushed to help the state understand that we have a higher percentage of seniors over 65 than most counties, they began to push more vaccine our way, so thank you for that. And know that my answer to the state when they ask, "How much can you handle?", is always, "Whatever you send, and they'll figure out how to get it out." So that's what we continue to do.
If you could speak to that. What is your capacity at the mall? How many shots can you give?
We try to max at about 2,000 a day. That's the number we feel safe. We've had one particular day since we've been in the mall, it was a second dose operation that we probably did about between 23 and 2,400, and that was because we had a lot of people show up for second doses that didn't have appointments, and we try not to turn them away because they need their second dose, but that was the day it became obvious to us that we really need to make the second day appointment only and just schedule more days, because that 23 created long lines, and the wait probably never got over an hour, but that's not the way. We like to keep the wait half hour or less and keep people moving through faster. So now we're moving to more of an appointment-only process and working on ways to schedule more days for second doses. You know, in a few weeks' time, four weeks from now, I'll have 13,000 second doses to do for the 13,000 first doses this week, so the numbers just keep climbing.
With the government's executive order, the additional people coming online, the additional vaccine coming in now, the third one approved and all that, and you've had a consistently higher supply coming in, is there a prospect for opening another facility similar to what you're doing at the mall, maybe in another part of the county, South County maybe?
Well...
And at what point would that make, or would that make sense? Do you see that happen?
So right now, we're exploring other opportunities in and around the mall area because it gives us some staffing efficiencies if we're close by, but we're still actively looking, so we haven't settled on that yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chuck, as always, and a great job, and it was, I didn't make that up, for my wife and I, it was extremely seamless. So people need to not worry about what's going to happen when they get to these sites. It just was quick and easy, and you're looking at a guy, all his boasting aside, that is absolutely frightened of needles. So I got through it there. All right, I've been asked if we can take a break, so we're going to take a break, and then we'll move on to item 21.